Unfortunately, due to Ohio law, people right out of high school may not become a law enforcement officer and must wait until the age of 21. However, state agencies will hire you at the age of 18 for not limited to the Ohio State Highway Patrol as an intern and the Ohio Department of Corrections. A few things that we have done is learned self-defense techniques. This is not just applied to law enforcement, but in general life. There are places around the state of Ohio where even as civilians, you will think, well, maybe I shouldn't be here. Sadly, that's the case. We are trying to build the future. I'm sorry, I'm out of my mind right now. I'd just like to close with, we are grateful that the Board of Education has decided to partner with TOLES and has been for at least the past, how long we say, 30, 40 years. I'd like to thank all of you and I wish you all a good one.
Zach Mauer came to us as a senior in Level 1 Welding, so come on up here and say.
So, TOLES has been a really good opportunity for me. Before TOLES, I didn't really know what I was going to do with the rest of my life after high school. I came into TOLES as a senior, but I'm in the first year of welding program and it's been a really amazing opportunity. It's inspired, it's passionate me for what I do. Every day I wake up in first year, I've been excited to go to school every day. But my teachers, I can't say enough great things about them, Mr. Wood and Mr. Pencil, that they've really done their best to give us the best of their, best of their skills and they really just, they try hard every day to teach us what we need to learn. After high school, I plan on going to Hobart Institute of Welding Technology to further my education in welding. I've already had multiple well-paying job offers and I'm not even out of high school yet, first year, so. It's been a really great opportunity and I'm just grateful that I got the opportunity to accept it because TOLES has really just given me that, that road to go down for the rest of my life, but you know, I think I'll, I know what I want to do.
Hey, LaRoe is here from our pharmacy. She's a senior as well.
So when I came into TOLES, I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do. I didn't know I wanted to be an alderman in some sort. I first wanted to start with nursing, but then I toured the pharmacy lab and it kind of changed my outlook and everything. So when I first joined it, I wasn't sure if I was going to stay for this program. But the further we got through it, the more we learned, it was more exciting. Like the first year, we learned just like a bunch of met term and what everything was used for. And then we talked about the second year and how everything changes and how we are very important people to the patients. And we're starting to learn how to like talk to the patients and everything and it's very exciting. And the academic program is like amazing because they combine their lab into like any worksheet possible and make sure you understand how to do anything. TOLES is probably the best choice I think. Oh, and I'm in marching band and TOLES made sure to like, all their, like, they make sure they get to cooperate together.
Where are you going after?
Oh, I'm just going straight to the workforce after high school.
And last but not least, Abigail Harrington, and she is from our nursing, senior lab.
So I'm a senior in the nursing lab. As a junior, you get certified with your STNA, basically meaning you can go and work in a long-term care facility. When I was growing up, I always thought I wanted to be a nurse, but like once like you have like a dream and like sometimes you get into it and you think you're not going to like, oh, maybe I don't want to do this. But coming here really like made me know like, yeah, that's something I want to do because like the teachers really did their best to like teach us how to be good aides and how to like eventually become good nurses. And like they're just super helpful. They help you get as much done as you need, like even if it was with your academics. And the academic teachers are the most helpful people ever. They try to do whatever they can for you and they really care about your future. As a senior right now, we're learning like how listen to your heart and your lungs and like the different sounds and like what's good and what's not. We've also learned a little bit about injections, like how do they give injections, how do they take blood. I'm not sure if we're going to get certified for phlebotomy or like we're going to like a little bit of phlebotomy maybe. After high school, I'm planning on going to, well, I enlisted in the Army Reserve, so this summer I'm going to Fort Jackson to do basic and then I'll go to Fort Gordon, which is in Georgia, to do my job training. I did not pick a job in the medical field for the Army because I want to come back and go to college at OU to get my BSN. And then I plan on going active duty and switching my job into the medical field.
So there's just a little piece of J K that we share. And like I said, we could be no more crap. This is a great representation and there's a place for every student at TOLES.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much for coming and speaking to us. It's exciting to see how excited you are about what you're doing. Could I ask, I'd like to know your thoughts on what we could do as a school board to help more students get into careers like this? What, what do you think we could do as a board to help more students?
I feel like we should talk about it more older.
Really?
Honestly, because I feel like it gets brought up once or twice and then students kind of forget about it and they don't really realize that coming right out of high school with a trade is actually very beneficial. And you know, I feel like a lot of people are just always in the back of their mind and they just think, oh, well, they only let in 50 students or 25 students and so I'm not going to get in, so they don't even try to apply. Which some of the, I mean, some, uh, what is it? Some programs, they're not even full and a lot of people don't realize that. And so I always just try to tell people, like, try it, try to get in at least. And I mean, I feel like I've found a few people, they're more freshmen, but they kind of think like, yeah, maybe I'll do like the sophomore program and test it out. But I don't know, I just don't think it's talked about enough at older.
I think it's helpful when you guys talk about it too. I mean, I know Avery, you've talked to my daughter about it and it's helped encourage her a lot. And I think word of mouth, obviously, you know, it's huge. When you talk to people and you're like, this is really cool and here's all the advantages. But yeah, as a board, we should be talking about it. We should be encouraging the school to talk about it more too. Thank you.
Okay, now, you guys welcome the.
Next, we'll move on to public comments. So first up, we have Mrs. Manbeck to talk about a follow-up on the old, the high school choir trip to New York City.
Perfect. My name's Cheryl Manbeck. I am elementary music specialist at Plain City Elementary. And I was afforded the opportunity to chaperone the high school choir trip to New York City just, just under a month ago. And I know sometimes the board just has questions regarding the value of some of those student trips. And I know you don't always get to hear the positives that results, you know, positive results that of all the items that you approve and all the meanings. Mr. Mays did not ask me to speak. In fact, he has no idea that I am even here tonight. Mrs. McDonald was on the trip with me as well. Again, I had no idea she was going to be here tonight. Just the experience that our kids got to experience, the culture of New York City. And in just kind of reflecting afterwards, even on my own musical career and all the things that I've done and been able to see, the things that those kids got to experience as a result of this trip, the musical opportunities just cannot be replicated with just a family vacation. Those kids had to experience performing as an ensemble in some of the most amazing cathedrals. And to hear Mr. Mays talk to them about the acoustics and you've got to wait for that delay because of those enormous, enormous cathedrals. It was just a great learning experience for those kids. They got to learn a song and dance routine from a Broadway star. They went through the music with the accompanists at the piano. They had the choreographer right there working with them. And then the kids had an opportunity to ask questions of these Broadway stars. How, how did you, you know, what kind of a career path did you get? What took you to that point? They got to take a backstage tour of Radio City Music Hall. If you just go into Radio City Music Hall, I mean, first of all, none of us have been there. But to be able to get onto the stage was an extra experience that those kids got to have as a result of being in a, a large group tour that you can't get as just a, a public tour experience. They got to meet a Rockette from Radio City's show, Crystal Spectacular. She happened to be from Gehanna. And that was, it was according to what we found out, an unplanned coincidence, but just again, to have that experience in, oh my gosh, here's somebody from the Columbus area, you know, dancing her, her heart out in, in New York City. So it was just a fantastic, phenomenal experience. I know there's, I know sometimes asking staff members to chaperone trips like this versus, you know, parents being able to do the same type thing. I will say, the value of having staff members who are used to working with, with large groups of kids and other people's children. Somebody may take a parent who thinks they can manage a group of children, but until they're put into that true experience, you, you don't know how the, the birds are going to fall. I think teachers just have an instinct to predict where there may be potential issues. We know the kids, we know their social emotional needs, and I think it's just a benefit to have the teachers who know those kids with them in those experiences. The Bob Rogers company that the prior to her, we worked with to put in this door and everybody that the end days of them as well. It's a tough bunch of company they work only with performing arts groups. Extremely well-organized agenda. It was jam-packed. There wasn't a minute in the whole agenda for kids to get into trouble of any sorts. Of course, there's, you know, the little things that you can't resist and Hannah can't get sick on the trip. But that's where that company really stepped in. They stepped in to help. I had one of the students in my group became ill and the company stepped in to get another hotel room in the hotel for the three kids who were concerned about health issues and that sort of thing. So we had a bus that had an incident with a mirror and had to be fixed, so we, we found a tour bus for part of a day. Our tour guide got us all on the subway and before you panic, we got everybody there. Such, such extreme care that, that those kids were taken care of from, from beginning to end. So I've chaperoned groups in Europe before. Honestly, this was my, my very first time to New York City. But also my first time since Oliver chaperone and not one bit of anxiety. Through the course of the whole thing with the trip. So I just wanted to shed some, some positives, a recap and any questions about the chaperone?
I don't have a question about the trip, but so do, on local trips, do parents chaperone and this is the first time the teachers have chaperoned or?
I don't think this is the first, but I think, I don't, I'd, I'd have to find out, I'm not sure as far as the history of when Mr. Brunner was here and Mrs. Foreman versus, you know, Mr. Hennig and Mr. Mayes. I don't, I don't know if that's, that's.
I've chaperoned these trips about five times and very often parents, and there are three to three of them, their children and friends because, you know.
To be the heavies.
We're used to seeing that, we can both, you guys kiss. We're not bringing this.
I didn't really think about it until you, you said that, so.
Well, I know it was a little bit of a strange, I'm covering, you know, sub-shore trips and things like that, especially this day. But I think the value of having those people that know those kids so well.
You said no anxiety, but.
No!
How many kids on subway are here all?
Not, not, not including the adults, yes.
All went smoothly.
That's amazing.
So sorry.
And then it's one of those problem solving that, that our tour guide was able to, you know, get all the tickets, avoid, avoid everybody, not even going to the gate, just come on over the, the large wear.
You didn't have to get the subway system.
He did it. So yeah, so yeah.
The 83C Street is the only one that parents have chaperoned. That I love. In the past, all the other major trip trips have been, parents go, but the staff has chaperoned.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Manbeck. Next, we have Jacob Marine to speak about tax evasion.
Should we pause a little bit?
Sure.
Does that matter?
No, no, it doesn't matter.
I will speak in public, so not be too late, three minutes. No, my topic's related to, we're doing this on the city council, it's more about tax evasion, it's more of a bigger picture. In my mind, tax, I'm, in studies, I have tax taxes to resolve on. To encourage growth in the right place, in the right way, at the right time. So if you want to develop, you know, service services, you want to serve tax, you know, plenty of cities that have a commercial, which we're remaining back traction because one of the things that are going to increase tax, they have that. At a point, the even benefits is school. Not to sing, we just have to have the tax evasion question, which is not, my comments weren't necessarily directed at this particular project, but there is a project, but the end is that. But like you say here, you're not, this is an example of a lot of projects, probably does the expectations, involves a little tour or. I haven't talked, I spoke today, it's basically town, you know, go back and forth, transfer channels as well, application. The point is that the, the project's not driving businesses, it's, it's a long-term, a long-term property, replacing businesses where there's not going to be people in that. You guys are, you're definitely, you're paying taxes, you're paying taxes, you're not residential, it's shit, you can't control. And the real estate taxes, if we're talking dollars and cents, you guys can just say it's up or down, it's going to change your life by a couple thousand dollars, so I'm not really saying, you know. But this is a responsible thing to do, but it's, it's nothing else on this point, but the precedent, I think is a big goal. And precedent is the head of the story, because anytime they're going to be asked, what's our project, who says? Now, pass, some of the, 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 all but a main, awful condition, any improvement for those things, the tax, the work that was done, there's nothing, nothing that fit the criteria. So I'm not upset about the public way of passing. This is, this is, it's kind of activity, and so it's mainly, so I said, I said, I think the point, the, there's an argument, it's a thing that the previous progress will really improve the black line of the facilities that's probably relatively, very, very, to me, maybe, 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 so this is true, it's true, well, versus,
Uh, versus uh, this part is probably something that's a place in the sorry, like a time sharing or a new. It's not uh, driving my type of kind of fit for school and we're obviously financially guys. You know what you're doing right now is he has been uh, you know, potential debt from actually after from next six years. With thirteen achievement benefit, be a little bit different. You know, like I said, a longer term, true factor, person who are kind of like way that they're saying to their very community, you know, the students here in the area. I have a harsh choice of one advice against food, you know, having, having answering some other questions. So maybe that it can make the school district to be going big with that. But this is something that the, the school district board points at these people around the world. The best way to be uh, say, say very proud of them. So uh, yeah, this is a personal thing and it's a particular, this is just a, just a bigger topic about what would be good for the school district. Which are really trying to say, and I'm not sure this one's easy. And this seems like it's a time to make things, to make a make of a way for him to stay in the game to prove everything. To let it be very thoughtful and with intention of long term, terms about where we were going on, we want to be all the way up for it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for speaking, Mr. Marine. Next, we're gonna move on to financial reports. I have a motion to approve February twenty twenty three financial reports as presented. Any discussion?
No update to forecast. Just did want to point out how how one uh, is being discussed. There's a potential negative impact that that goes through. Uh, I would be surprised if it does. Um, but if it does, it's still like simulations about thirty thousand less than topic. So I want to make sure that, um, you know, we got on that. Uh, like I said, I see private goes through. Right now I think it's like a year, but uh, what happens to negative impact to our, our pack track trip that goes through.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Yes. Is it one or two?
Yes.
Is it that one or two?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Muster Park?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next, we want to grants and donations. We have a seven hundred and fifty dollar Horizon grant for Heidi Franco and the pedal holding classroom at Institute Elementary. I have a motion to approve grants and donations as presented. Discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes, yes.
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 Okay, next on the total report, I'd like to invite Dr. Hoodley to give us the total updates, please.
Well, President, it's hard, members of the board, uh, from this registration. Thank you. It's hard and I'm glad I didn't have to immediately follow up students that in no win situations all the time. Did they do a wonderful job?
They did, they did.
You know, some, some things I wanted to share, and I think you saw already, but we have some visitors, you know, we're a, we're a school of choice. Students choose to come here and it's a big choice to leave your school district, to leave a part of a day or a full day, your junior, senior year. I really appreciate the teamwork, the collaboration. You heard students who are in marching band or your extracurricular activities. I know John John Alder, um, your high school principal shared, she's like ninety percent of your kids read something uh, every year. And that's why we wanted to make students get one opportunity for that high school experience. And we're a mile and a half each other. So that's exactly the way it should work out now. We can create win-win situations and when there are conflicts, adults will work them out so that the students get the best of all of us. So appreciate your, your efforts on that. Uh, in front of you, you have a copy of our, our March report, a couple of things I just want to highlight here. And, and I, I, the first part of this, we talked about our enrollment at toll or I shouldn't call it. The number of applications we are receiving has never been higher. That is true across career tech, across the entire state of Ohio. I think there are a lot of different things going on. I think it's at Quaspa's college. I think it's, it's economic opportunities that are available for students or adults with the right credentials to go right into the workforce. And if we have a workforce that needs in a desperate way employees, there's a lot of factors coming together. Uh, but what it's leading to is across the state of Ohio, a growing number of students submitting applications uh, for career tech education. I want to thank our tolls board of education, which builds a hard over. You know, you heard the one young man, here is a senior in welding. We doubled up our welding program this year. Went from one section of twenty-five to section of fifty. Made a capital investment of over two hundred thousand dollars in welding equipment. Uh, if we didn't do that, that young man would not have been talking with you tonight. He would have not had found his way. Uh, and you heard he's going to pull hard, which if you haven't, if you're unfamiliar, it's like the harder to develop. So, so sometimes we don't recognize that just allowing students to have an opportunity opens a door to a rest of them. So, um, we added again, did welding, uh, we added a third section of tree nursing. We added a second section of cosmetology. You heard the two young ladies in cosmetology, um, and a second section of construction. If you're in any way, shape or form involved in construction, you know what the intel situation? As well as the LG battery plant is being uh, constructed or will be constructed down in, they found in uh, construction workers are as premium. And will be for the next one to two decades. Uh, I didn't even touch on residential, uh, which your school district will see a lot of. And that's, that's a good order. But again, it's the support of the tolls boards are adding those programs because it's not simply adding a teacher. It's adding equipment that oftentimes is approaching a quarter million dollars to add a program. And by, by doing that, you saw the fruits of those lately. So our enrollment applications are here. We do have some programs that are still uh, have, have some openings in them. Uh, but across the board, uh, we have not seen this type of numbers of applications ever. Last year, our enrollment on site was about six seventy. This year, we started the year to about eight twenty, we're right about eight hundred, seven ninety right now. Next year, we'll be over a thousand students on site here. That's the second group that we love because it's opportunities for students, just what you heard uh, tonight. We've also started some senior only programs with questions about how can we help us aboard? Uh, please help us get a word out of the senior only programs. I want to thank your high school administration, they allowed us as tolls to come down and speak to all your current juniors. These are brand new programs. The business program, I know we don't have a lot of details. This is business for the college bound and the career bound. Uh, this is project management certification, leadership certification, a deep dive just in using Excel, which I'm sure you treasure, will appreciate. We don't teach Excel in, in high schools and every profession uses that, that we, we tend not to spend a lot of time on, on that software pieces. We have some new senior only programs, uh, but we're going to be adding our fourth uh, teacher and our pre- nursery instructor. And I'll tell you, and, and we had one student in second year, um, and she said she was going into the military, wonderful pathway for her. We're working with Columbus State, with Ohio Health, with Ohio University, with Mount Carmel, um, to a zero uh, debt pathway to a BSS. Two years at tolls, two years at Columbus State, two years, it could be Ohio State or Mount Carmel. Uh, if you're continuously employed by Ohio Health, uh, they're giving fifty-two hundred uh, a year tuition reimbursement, which more than will cover the tuition at Columbus State. And all that time, you're making money working with your SD and A to get a community here. So that's zero pathway to a college degree, of which, which fifty percent of our students who may leave us head on to college. Or post-second, it could be Hobart, it could be Columbus State, uh, we, we assume still across the board. But especially in our health pathways, pre- vet tech, um, pharmacy tech, those students in mass tend to go on from us to higher education here. Um, I'll conclude my comments because I know you have a lot of things on your agenda. At the back of this, there's some further descriptions of these senior only programs. Also just uh, some, some PR about career tech in general. If, if you need any more information about why this is a wonderful pathway, just take a look at those last two sheets of paper. Again, it can be a, a difference maker as it relates to uh, gainful employment. You're immediately out of high school or out of high school and right into college there. Uh, and then finally, and maybe most importantly, I hope you have April twenty-sixth or go in your calendar. Keep that night free. That is our second annual tolls, uh, board of education, plus one significant others. Come here and see our students in action. Uh, you're going to have a wonderful meal provided by our culinary trees. As well as, and probably the most impressive, just you get to see all, all many of our career tactical programs. Students from those programs tell you, just like you heard tonight, why do they change tolls? What do they like about it? And, and again, that helps you better understand. But, but again, these restrictions for students to public speaking is huge. Because they actually are extracurriculars, our sports are called career tech student organizations, and that's a part of our being able to speak to the public. So I was impressed with the young man in criminal justice, he had his speech to go there. With, with that, I want to thank you all for coming tonight, they prioritizing tolls and career tech and educational opportunities for all students. I know after the meeting tonight, uh, if your time will allow, we'll have a, a tour of, of tolls will take you to see as much as we're willing. Spend three hours, three hours over there. Uh, but there's wonderful things happening with Jonathan Alder's students right behind you, every single day. What questions might I answer from this or anything else?
It's impressive. It's really, really impressive.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah. Let us see.
Well, and it's, there are kids and it happens through partnerships and again, in unique opportunity that Jonathan Alder's schools have in relation to tolls is a mile and a half distance. So whole life liquor for our students to manage complaints. You have to make the commitment to get on at us and go forty minutes one way, just to get here. It is, it is an opportunity that as you grow, and I know that you know, you will be growing. Um, it will be an opportunity for us to further those partnerships, expand on that collaboration and continue to do wonderful things for students. Thanks everyone.
Yeah, yeah, did I understand that you're gonna be leaving? Would you, you know, be doing a?
Uh, no, don't be here. I'm signing certificates for our lift award.
As part of the tour, are, 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 are we, we leave the signs up for, uh, for the addition?
Oh, you know what, I think I'm in the student activity room, but I, I'll print them off. I'll print them off. Yeah, we are, because of the ever increasing enrollment, we're doing a deep dive. It's a little covered a little bit in here. And there's actually, uh, Governor Dwyane has proposed two hundred million dollars in facility expansion specifically for lead career tech programs. There's eighty-nine around the state of Ohio, and so we're working hard on that. We're really uniquely positioned here. And I can show you, uh, and I'll show you this uh, third tonight, but a diagram where the intel plan will, is being constructed. And where this LG battery plant is constructed. The overlap as far as a half an hour drive is Plain City. And so I've got a great diagram that I received last week. And, and you're uniquely situated for just great employment opportunities just a half an hour away with these two endpoints. So I'll, I'll share that with both of you and I'll get some of those pictures for the tour today. You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, next, policy update committee, would you like to update us?
Yes. Okay, so we had, so the way that it works is, um, we contract with an organization called Neil. Comes in and gives us updates based on uh, law changes in the state of Ohio, federal law changes, recommendations from that state's board of education. Where the, um, state board of education, you know, they make changes in requirements for school districts in Ohio. So we had a lot, um, this time around. And, um, the policy committee went through all of them and all of those edits are. Well, you, you were sent all of it. Yeah, the edits, the changes were calculated. Um, I just wanted to run through the general ones really quickly, just to give you an idea. Um, the, uh, one through one point one technical corrections. That's the only editor there is adding us the ability to change the name of the compliance officer without going to two readings. So all the policy changes require two readings. Um, two, one, one, four, state performance indicators, um, those were changing our rating system. It used to be A, B rating, now it's stars. So we're just getting our policies and compliance with the state board of education rating system. Um, college credit plus program two, two, seven, one. That's, uh, military families who have to move, um, can complete those students, can complete online. Their college credits, credit plus options if they have to move. Um, and if not, they can withdraw without any penalties. Um, out of state trips, twenty-three, forty, point oh one. We just, um, remove the requirement that any group can only do an out of state trip once every two years. Now, it's up to the superintendent. Um, homebound instruction program, uh, twenty-four, one, two. This again was the Ohio Department of Education. And it's just getting us in compliance with the Ohio Department of Education and also statutes. And basically five hours of homebound instruction are equivalent to five days of, um, attendance, five days of classroom. Five, just five days, five hours, homebound instruction, five days of classroom, okay, okay. Two, six, two, three is the student assessment and academic intervention services. Um, there is an end of course test that is now required for certain subjects for class of twenty, twenty-three and beyond. So that's now listed in that policy. Um, fifty-three, ten, health services. That, there was just an update to get the concussion protocol to follow with the Ohio High School Athletic Association as required. Which means that to return to school, you have to get, um, written permission for the licensed healthcare professional. Or to return to activity, my apologies. Okay. Um, fifty-four, oh, eight, academic acceleration, early entrance to kindergarten and early high school graduation. Um, it basically brings all, that policy vision in line with the Ohio Department of Education. Um, and what's required to get early entrance into kindergarten, early high school graduation.
Is there some extra policy requirements?
A lot of them moved. It's just sort of, it was changing it. One, one interesting thing is that you, now, kids don't, if they complete, which is the next section. But if they complete their competency readiness requirements, they can graduate at any time. There's no crime that kids stay at school for four years. Yeah.
There were a lot of, there were a lot of, we've worked, worked last, last four years with, um, hitting the target for graduation requirements. So we caught it, caught it through the year now, there's a lot of left that, um, and then been eliminated.
So, um, fifty-four, sixty graduation requirements has, it sets out the competency readiness requirements, requiring seals. Two diploma seals, including one from a state approved list. Um, that just get in line with the Ohio Department of Education. Um, so, and some of these procedures, or some of these policy adjustments have to do with the, the school district responsibility to report. And, um, to maintain oversight. And the other is specifically requirements for students. So they know what they have to do to, to leave us, which is so sad. Fifty-six, ten, um, is removal, suspension, permanent exclusion of students. The only change here was if you had a student that was, um, permanently suspended from another district before they were entitled to a, um, hearing before the. Now they're still entitled to a hearing, it just isn't before, it's not required that it be before boarding. They would still be entitled to a hearing if they wanted to enter a school district. Um, sixty-three, twenty-five, procurement, federal grants and funds. Um, this has to do with the, when, when required by federal program legislation. Any contract that we engage in, in excess of two thousand dollars has to comply with the prevailing wage requirements. Does that make sense? All right. You guys falling asleep yet? Okay.
It's been a great, great job.
Sixty, twenty-three, use of credit cards. We just added the ma, the maintenance director and the bus mechanic as authorized card holders in our policies. Um, eighty-two, twenty, point oh one, delaying or closing school due to weather. Uh, we just said that, we just revised the policy so that extracurriculars are canceled on the days that schools are closed. However, the superintendent has the ability and changes of, when the weather changes to reinstate whatever extracurricular policies there are. Activities, no policies. Okay. Um, eighty-three, ninety, uh, animals on school district property. I'm gonna pull that one for consideration today. We have a little bit more work to do on that policy before I ask, submit it to the board as a whole. Um, eighty, at eighty-three hundred, well, I think it says eighty-three thirty on here. Yeah, eighty-three thirty is student records. Uh, this is just now, we're revising the policy to add the opportunity for students and parents to opt out of sharing student directory info. Um, when they're filing for registration at the beginning of school year. And eighty-four hundred, school safety. This one, it includes updates to and reporting requirements for our emergency safety plans within the district. And eighty-four twenty deals with emergency situations at schools and it clarifies that. Same thing as, as eighty-four hundred. Um, it includes some language updating, but then it also clarifies that emergency evacuation drills, um, should happen to less than six times a year. And tornado drills at least one time a month. That goes the only addition there. Eighty-four, sixty-two, student abuse neglect. Um, this is, this policy is being amended to comply with state law requirements. Um, to provide developmentally appropriate instruction to kindergarten through sixth grade regarding sexual abuse. Prevention annually, to do that. We are required to provide that instruction annually to kindergarten through sixth grade. We are also required to provide developmentally appropriate sexual violence prevention instruction to seven, to twelve grades annually. The policy also has a parental notification requirement and the ability of parents to review the materials that are going to be presented. And the ability of parents to opt their children out of writing. Okay?
So, so no statement, they, they can still opt out?
Yes. We just have to provide it. It's a district. Okay? Um, and what's next? Tobacco? Technology? Technology. Um, most of the technology policies just change the word from district technology resources to district information and technology resources. And, um,
Would that fall under the, 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 no, no, forward, would that fall under the tech, technical change?
Yeah, yes, but there was a little, there was slightly, yes, yes. So we could do that without double reading. But there were some other things like, um, uh, seventy-five, forty. You'll notice there's point two, point three, point four. Um, particularly point three and point four. Those do, we, they added, uh, I think I've heard of chat, chat GPT and AI. Okay, so now it's, our policy says it's forbidden for students to use the AI technology unless the teacher is, it's part of the class. And the teachers can use it if it's for instructional purposes. Okay, so we're just, trying to keep up with all the technological advances. Um, right. We're gonna be doing this once, once a month. Um, okay, eighty-three hundred, continuity of organizational operation plan. That, they're supposed to be, we have a plan, if, if, if some major catastrophe happens. And it just adds that cyber, cyber to that policy language. Um, information security, really, that was eighty-three oh five, really, my changes to the wording of the policy. I don't think there were any substantive changes to that one. Um, all information data collected is still classified as either confidential controlled or published. Um, eighty-three fifteen, information management. It clarifies what, um, electronically stored information is and also talks about what a litigation hold is. The district is, what sort of information we hold on. Um, advertising, ninety-seven hundred, advertising commercial activities. This is just in the policy section that tells us what we can do advertising wise. It just adds the district website to also include like what, what we can do and can't do on our property, on our website. You know, um, just clarifying the website is part of the, the, it falls within that same policy section. Um, tobacco. Pretty easy. It just, I'm actually a little surprised this has taken this long. But it's, uh, all the policies have to do with adding favors and aerosols. Including tobacco products derived from synthetic nicotine. These are forbidden, forbidden on our property by students, staff, visitors, public attendance. And those, all that, that was the change in all tobacco policies, so.
What is, what is snus?
What is what?
S, N, U, S. It's listed, and I checked on every one, like, oh, maybe that one is, it says, you know, cigarettes, cigars, tobacco, snuff, and snuff. S, N, U, S.
I don't know, maybe Russian.
I thought, I thought, I tried to read it, it was a, it was a.
It's, it's a, it's a, like a skull, it's a chew, it's a. It's like, it's a little pouch.
The pouch.
It's, it's.
So, 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 so.
It's like a, it's a, it's a, and back, it's, it's like a, okay.
And all that stuff is already, the whole thing that was, I really, and there was, it just said tobacco products and they're trying to, they're trying to clarify that. Even stuff that's derived from synthetic nicotine is a tobacco product, I think.
Thank you for all that. Sounds like it's, it doesn't cost a lot of time.
And I, I can't, can't, thanks, it was a walk around, it was a black, I'm not worried. I mean, this is a three hour meeting and just the information overload of all the changes. And there's, there's lots more reading, you have to, you have to study and ask each other questions. Does this mean what? I think it means we're going back to the old, getting care of patients and asking their legal team, why are you, you know, make, make types of recommendations? And specifically, you know, sign in and what you do, and dive, diving in and to, and make sure that we're really clear on, on what we're recommend. So thank you, thank you.
Good, good. Okay, next, move on to eight point oh three, superintendent's report. Dr. Miller?
Well, I wanted to start off by thanking Dr. David Lee and the toll administrators and the students that, that, so, I wasn't, wasn't, I wanted to see how well, uh, they did, but not, not even where they, they well spoke them. But they were so passionate about their programs and, you know, that's inspiring. And then to hear a student say, he's inspired in the school because of this program or the school or the construction director, just, just, that's what education should make. So that was really, that was, that was, how about the students all, all turning to the, um, present on their connection actual polls. I, I wanted to give the school board an update on our strategic planning. We've made some progress here this last couple of weeks, there's a lot of work to do. Our strategic planning, last time we got to like, we made some significant changes. We had the village of Plain City come in and give an update on developments and the numbers. And I'll tell you, it's been higher every time I've got someone from the village of the numbers have changed every, every time, so we're still learning. So, as I presented last month, um, the village of Plain City hired a company by the name of Montra to do this area growth analysis. We're taking the information that gave Montra and the village of Plain City and thank you Jason. Gathering that information and I'm working, working with Quark strategies, Quark, Quark strategies has done this enrollment projection study, nineteen, nineteen. So lots of things have changed, changed eighteen, nineteen, so as I gain more information from the village, communicating, getting Quark strategies. And they're trying to, um, help us comprehend what this means. Because, uh, economically residential growth is way different than school district employment or enrollment. So we're still trying to learn exactly what it means to this district over the next several years, but.
They're also, they're also gonna feed information from your own township as well.
That, that is our next step. This is just part of, um, what I'm learning so far, but all over the district, including, uh, Jerome Township. We'll take those numbers, add that to the conversation, I'm having Quark strategies to have the bigger picture. So what we know right now, um, Jason has presented and Derek Peterson has had our last meeting. And, and we've learned that about fifteen hundred more from the district over the next, next four years. When we, you know, this is Iowa evening, um, information. When we, you know, this is Iowa meeting, um, information, we go back to Quark strategy, there's the actual this area, they say, we, we, yes, um, fifteen hundred homes. What does that equate to? And it, and it's different, um, for every square district. John Oliver is a desirable place where families move to raise their children in this, in this district. So, it is a higher yield per household than maybe other strong districts. So, that yield that we have is about point six six per number of homes. And what that, what we're looking at, the developments that we know that's under construction are already approved with the village of Plain City. Has about eight hundred and ten students within, um, four years. Well, that's also, eight hundred and ten students within four years. So, we go back to Quark strategies and we talk about fifteen hundred homes. And they, they are teaching us that, um, yes, it might be eight hundred and ten students, but it usually takes ten to fifteen years for a new home to reach its maximum yield. So, we still have a little content necessarily, meaning eight hundred and ten students when this construction is done in four years. So, um, in central Ohio, Quark strategy specifically yields less than point two students per unit in the first few years after development is completed. So, we do have some time, things are steady, but we're gonna start a master planning immediately as soon as we, um, have, have the most accurate numbers. So, the committee also did a rating of all of our buildings. I think this was just a focus on available seats. So, the, even though you know, it would suggest junior high, it had a high priority, we're gonna be engaged. Last week's focus was just on room based available seats. So, they rated the high and the low priority. Plain City elementary is the highest, because of the least amount of available seats and then the highest. So, those will be our B O businesses over the next few months, um, with, we're gonna find, find space for students. And then we start talking about the facility with master planning. And then we made some significant progress. I, I put A three, four, West Wayne. Um, we, we finally are having a conversation where the committee has to, you know, basically, basically put recommendations down for the board on what their individual preference is with three, four, West Wayne, that, that, um, area. So, it was seventy-six percent of the committee, that seventeen committee members voted that, uh, the district had land and in portfolio, you know, given, given process to demolish the building. And the committee might, the board to consider, uh, looking at property for future school use. And that can mean multiple different, um, types of school use. But the most important piece was, in partnership with the village of Plain City, how that looks. Maybe some community space, maybe some green space, some office space and possibly, um, pre-K. So, it's, it's in collaboration and in partnership with the village of Plain City. So, the board has a decision to make here in the future, uh, on that, on that, you know, next, next step before you go to the next. Any, any questions?
What, how do you mean like designs that include condos and apartments and that, what's, how, how, are you, do you understand how the village is?
So, there's lots of, it's, it's floating around, it depends on, you need.
So, the village had a, the village contracted to have a strategic plan, right, right, same, same, right? They, they contracted out of, a master plan. And so, as part of that, this was part of the development, that, that somebody just said, hey, this is a potential use for this space. So, there wasn't, the village in collaboration with the district. This was something that the, the, the contracted group took on on their own.
It was a very conceptual idea. I think there was multiple options and areas and areas. So, we, we really, it is not really like those decisions, but just thinking what could be on that site, I, that's what ended up in a master plan. So, I think there's, um, four or five other sub areas in the uptown area that we've done that with, the school site was one, um, of other sites.
So, so right now, it's seventy-six percent of that committee voted to keep the building property in the district's portfolio.
Keep the property.
Well, to start the demolition and keep, keep the building.
Now, the demolition, still that, um, approval process, I think it's a good design, I'm a review board, but the, the city, certainly want to work with us on that. We took, we took the building last Friday to show them some of the bones in the basement of that. So, I think everyone walked out in agreement that that's probably the safest thing for this community. You can correct me on that, Jason.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
What, what, what do we need to do to, uh, or, or, what are next steps? Are we going to start, start the process for demolition? What do we need to do? Do we need to meet the village? Do we need to start some bids? Do we need to vote on something?
I already reached out to Jason and, uh, some kids colleagues on, let's get a preliminary meeting set up with the designs on your board. A, a meeting before the, to talk about what is, what is like the C C or, or O Z or contents of that, that, that's the base space. So, that's the next, next step.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we're gonna move on to personnel consent items. So, we have some reservations, we have employment. And. Some recommendations, job descriptions. Can I get a motion to approve the employment and personnel consent items as presented now would be nine point oh one to nine point oh three?
So, so.
Roll call.
Yes, yes.
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 Okay, next, we're gonna go to ten point oh one. Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, or, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four John Oliver High School school and course in book?
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, next, ten point oh two, policy review, an update, a second meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the policy revision language for policy eighty-two, twenty point oh one? As president?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next, we have ten point oh three. So, if you remember last month, we had a CRA before us for ten years, at, sorry, sorry, twelve years at a hundred percent. And a hundred percent abatement and we had taken it back as five years for fifty percent. And applicants would, are here tonight to ask us to reconsider that decision. So, I'd like to invite the village and applicant to give us your thoughts.
So, I'll make a few comments and then, uh, I'll write over to Mr. Dawson here. But first, I do wanna say that I appreciate your time and, um, you know, the ability to entertain our request here. Um, so, as, uh, as bill management, we are here, uh, the previous meeting in February to go over a CRA, the application for a project, the, uh, former reality theater of Crown Plain City. Um, the request of abatement was a hundred percent for twelve years. Um, counter offer from Ford was fifty percent for five years. And our corporate area has, um, worked to, uh, basically come back with a counter counter offer, um, for seventy-five percent for seven years. So, um, I just wanted to, uh, present this opportunity. Um, if, if, if the board agrees to this counter offer tonight, um, the game plan from here will be, um, the application is in agreement with Rock Village Council, um, on the twenty-seventh of March. Um, with, uh, second reading and public approval on April tenth. Um, so, at that time, um, I do have some projections. I know that was an issue that came up at our discussion was, um, basically what would be the cost of this project to the village in the abatement. Um, so that is going around right now. With our conversations you've had with the county auditor, it's really, um, most impossible to actually do a formal estimate on the impact of the project. As it very soon to be assessed, so active project on this, this, but what I've done is basically go through, um, and looked at the village and assess value and all that works out for the district. And the form that I have in front of you tonight, it basically is these person, and if, if property gets, it was served for value, assessed value, which is column one. Um, you can read through and see what the potential impacts would be to the school district if the abatement was allowed to, um, continue or was created at seventy-five percent for seven years. Or if there was no abatement on the property and there was assessed value, um, increases naturally through, uh, through time. Um, so, again, I really have no indication, I can't really tell you what the final assessed value of the property would be. But for example, we'll take the two hundred thousand level. Say the building, right now is one thirty-nine, twenty, that's in the order line at the top. Say the property goes up to the two hundred thousand level, you can see basically in column, um, column seven, um, that this school district, um, would still receive fifteen thousand, uh, seven hundred and forty-six dollars worth of tax abatement over seven years. Now, if there was no abatement on this property, um, in the value, it was naturally one to two thou, two hundred thousand, the district would see seven thousand, um, and change in tax revenue over those seven years. So, basically, by enacting a, uh, the seventy-five percent seven year tax abatement, um, you would have a difference, basically a loss, a theoretical loss of twelve eighty over that seven year tax abatement period. So, I just, again, this is a little bit complicated, but if you follow the, the column one, basically, and column seven, um, is the most, uh, most important here to look at. Um, but that being said, I will turn over to Tim, uh, real quick and just give you, uh, the opportunity to talk to him. If there's any questions, uh, you might have.
Hi, um, first I wanted to, um, let you guys know about your time. You know, you guys are very busy, you have a huge agenda, um, and your role in making critical decisions like the one involving potential tax incentives to support partner on revitalization of the community. And, 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 um, I would also, I would like to thank you for your partnership. Um, and it's a demonstrator of responsibility to bring the investment back to center the community and restoring community assets from underutilized, underutilized, baked in some senses neglected properties. Um, and to revitalize, restore community amenities that are attracting additional investment opportunities and, and there's an additional, um, it's increasing property values. Um, so, um, along with that, I, I think that, one of the things that I wanted to mention is there's been eight pretty big tax incidents that have been brought, brought in front of this board. Um, and I think, I think there's a large confusion amongst, um, a lot of people, including the village, including the board, to understand what was the purpose in the CRA. And I don't know if any of you have ever been given a copy of the original, um, document that explains why you're doing what we're doing. Um, and what we're supposed to be doing in order to, to get one of these in front of you is that, um, the property commissioners are supposed to be going to the village and they're supposed to be presenting those things to the village. The village is then to take it to city council for the recommendation to take it to you. And so, that was what was done in the previous eight, um, eight, um, have sense of abatement in this one too, where I had my question as well, we go a hundred percent statement. That was presented to city council, city council said, okay, we're gonna approve to go to the school board and then, um, just Saturday. Um, and that's one of the next, my next points is just Saturday, I got a copy of your last school board meeting. And excuse me that, and I'm not here to play said blame on anyone, because I think it's all a matter of education. And everyone understands me, what we're supposed to be doing. Um, and, um, after listening to the school board, I think that there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. I would personally like a postponement, um, of this discussion until the next meeting, that I need more time, um, to dive into all of the impacts of the previous tax incidents. Because I've been five of those myself. And there's already started, um, a precedent set in the past, not only from the village, but from, um, the school here, about a hundred percent. And, um, I'm willing and I really want to take the additional time to prepare a presentation and highlight my successes, uh, impact of those previous projects. And, um, how they, how we partner together, um, and what those things have enabled. Um, and as well as, um, my vision for the theater property. Um, because in my opinion, out of all of those days that have already been approved, that twelve years and one hundred percent, this is gonna be the largest community impact of all of them. Um, because we're gonna open that theater up, not as Mr. Seer sort of suggested, as it's gonna be bachelorized, there's not gonna be bachelorized, there will not be bachelorized. There's gonna be, it's gonna actually be a theater you're doing where there can be, um, dancer cycles and all community oriental things are gonna be in place. There could be weddings. Um, and so, I think that there's a lot of misconceptions and I really want, I really, really like and respect the house for you guys to take this, um, until the next meeting. Because I really, I think I've got to this a little bit more. Um, I don't wanna just need your hand in a situation, I want everyone to understand. And I have some questions myself, that's because what impact this is on the school district, I know, um, that, that has zero impact. As far as the number of new students that are gonna be on your school district, zero. And there's already been an increase in tax revenue, because I purchased the building for five times what's with the assessment. And so, there's already been an increase in that tax revenue to the school district. And, um, it really does spur a lot of development. And as you can see in the downtown now, um, it is completely changing, completely changing. Because of our partnership together, um, in a lot, a lot of ways, whether that's lock the clock, whether that's the TUR program that I participated in. Whatever it is that the, the school district needs or asks me of any athletic function. My side of my low is yours. It, it, I don't charge my mind for any, any athletic, anyone that wants to use it from the school district, there's never been a charge. I've always wanted to, and I really wanna continue that. Um, because that's what it's there for, it's for, it's for, for them to use, for them to enjoy. Um, so, anyways, I would like to table this. Um, I am prepared to, uh, for a little bit of discussion, as you actually say, no, we don't wanna table, table, we wanna move forward, we're both today. Um, but I would like to table it, um, because we have had eight previous, um, tax announcements up for a week.
Well, well, can I intercept? I, I, I mean, I do, um, you know, that has happened. But it's, it's a word. We also see the kind of development that's coming and we can't, can't continue that as a board. You know, one thing we need, anything, the resource, if you saw that, you know well what labor market is, it helps me educate kids to graduate ready for the workforce. I mean, work, work needs our kids, yeah, they wanna make things that affect education. And so, um, I hear you about it, I was president, I think that did happen, but I don't, I don't know if we can continue that. And I can say we can't. But, but, that's, that's the opposite. Just for what it's worth.
Sure, sure.
And, and to kinda echo that, if you, if, I'm, I'm, I'm okay to table it. I think, I think we'll all be okay to table this for the, for, for a month. But, but if you come back and present, I think an important thing for you to address is why this property, this project should qualify for an abatement. Because as, as I see it, my understanding of how the areas are supposed to work is that it's supposed to incentivize development. And at this point, you're bought committed, you already bought the building. And so, there was no, there, there, you didn't need an incentive to buy the building because you already bought it. And so, I've, I struggle to, I struggle to see the value, uh, that will be created from the district to give up valuable tax dollars. And, and, and also in speaking of precedent thing, at some point, somebody's gonna have to be the loser. And at some point, we have to, we have to change. Because if we let this go, then the next time you or somebody else comes before us, they're gonna say, well, the last time you proved it. Well, at some point, we have to change it. We have to change the precedent. And so. So, uh, I would encourage you, if you come back and back and present, to include all of, you know, all of those arguments.
And Jim, it's, it's not just village, we have, we have, a lot of development there, it's, it's, we have favorites as well. So we, we, we get a lot of, and we have to get, with road running, um, with workforce issues, we have to get a tip for it. So, um, I hope you understand our, our position as we're in as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just, I, I believe, because it was so recent that you just voted for one. It was within weeks of, not months, it's not years ago, it was just a few weeks ago, um, when it came to, I believe it was the fireworks, or the recumbent building, or the block. Um, and that discussion never came up at that point with the board, and that's why I was wondering why, why now.
Well, well, part of, in, in, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, a big difference, in my opinion, between, you know, if you look at Pioneer, you look at what you did, you look at what you did. What, you know, you know, any, any of these buildings that we've talked about prior to this have been massive dollar amount investments. That the, but this particular project, again, CRAs are designed to look at each, each project individually. And, uh, but, but those, previous projects have had massive investments of dollars. That, that one could argue that money is being put back, the, the tax being, being put right back into the building versus this particular project. The bulk of the project is your purchase price. And so that's a delineator for me from what has previously went on to, to this particular project.
That's probably the biggest misconception, because I played down what I thought. And according to the CRA, you can't even start to get architectability, the building, the building of a redwood, a set of stands. And I can't even go to a contractor and say, okay, here's what we want to do, we want to completely take the four walls, bring the four walls rolling back, all of the demolition work is going to be done. And here's all the things that we want to do inside the building, how much is that? We weren't even able to do that yet. And no one can apply for CRA until you purchase the property, um, even ask for a CRA day. And so it is one of those things where we're always working backwards as an investor. And, um, so I went to the city of Marysville today, how much does the Avalon Theater cost to redo? It was by the time they were on three million dollars. And I wouldn't be surprised if that number I put down there is so low, it absolutely is. Now that from the start, it peel backs on those onions of that building and, and those four walls, oh my, it's going to, it's going to be way, way larger. There was just, there's no way for me to know. There's, it's a, it's a complete guess dance for anyone that doesn't have a set of, so the prince says, here, I'm taking these as a general contractor, commerce is what it's possible to do. And so it's really, really hard, really, really hard. And, and I think that that's one of the things, just like in all my other projects, that I, I, I way underestimated how much it was going to cost to redo the greenery, how much it was going to re. By the time you got down to the foundation, Pioneer pizza, I, I, three times what I originally thought it was going to cost. I should publish a stop and demolish the building, but I didn't, I didn't want it, I didn't want that building down, I loved that building. Um, and so it's one of those things where you just don't know until you, to your hands in the project, so many times, and I know that it's so hard for me to tell you that. Um, but it's just the reality of, of what's true. Um, and I, I just, I, I apologize for making it seem like we're only going to put two hundred thousand dollars on a building. It's crazy, it's impossible going to put two hundred dollars. I would have two hundred thousand dollars in a sound system, I found out. Just the sound system, we haven't even done, we haven't even put any, any, any construction up to it, I'm just my lights, my sounds for that, for that building. It's, it's just.
No, no, I think, I think a little more reasonable than that, because we can, we can, by the way, what information that you're giving us to begin with. So, please, and then, and then you can help educate us.
Okay, that would be wonderful, I would, I would love to. And, and at the end of the day, I want, I want to partner with you and I want to, I want to agree that maybe these previous days weren't, were this way, but this one's not going to. Same with the village, government, they haven't come to me and told me the previous days they approved are this, and, and this is how we're going to do it from this point forward. They haven't said, worried about it. Um, so I'm disappointed in, in that communication that didn't happen. Because it should never have come to you to begin with. If Jason came here recommending fifty percent, he never came to me and said that, I have a human, it says your application looks great. And that was one of the things that I did listen to at board meeting was that, that's not the recommendation that should have been presented to you. What was presented in front of council, that's what brought to you, should have been, um, given to you as a recommendation, which was the same thing as the last last week.
Well, I don't, I don't think, we, 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 Jason didn't, that wasn't a recommendation from Jason, we, that was, that was us.
So that was right, right before the meeting then, that you had, that you had recommended?
No, no, we talked about it at the meeting, we talked about it at the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, in, in, if laws passed out so that we do not, you do, do, the village is not even request approval from the board for the seventy-five percent abatement, does it have a timeline on it?
Still ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years for seven.
Is it seventy-five years, ten years?
I, I, we don't even have to meet here, that's, that's minimal.
Yeah.
Because, because they're saying that the boards have too much power, that's, that's, that's developers of the, of the cities, they're saying that the, the schools have way too much power to shoot down investors. And because, because honestly, what I understand. It's actually, it's easy. Mm-hmm, I would have a better deal if I just, I didn't.
Well, so, so for clarity, that doesn't mean that the, the village has to approve seventy-five percent in ten years. That means anything excess of seventy-five percent in ten years would require school district approval. And so if your request is below that, it would only go to the village for approval, that doesn't necessarily mean, uh, council. Well, you, so this is a previous, so you'd have to pull this obligation recently, you know, obligation.
Yeah, so if that's the case, if there's a table, uh, I don't know how your report works out, but we wouldn't go back to the same application, it would be an entirely new application. As FYI, for you guys, but it would be all run from the village.
If the ask, unless his ask is, if his ask is a hundred percent, if his ask is a hundred percent for twelve years, that would still have to come back to us. But if it's, if it's, under, ten years or under, or seventy-five per- percent or under, that would not need to come back with a report. And, and a new application.
I just sort of wanted to continue the partnership that I had in the past, on the previous ones that I have, and my relationships that I already have. And not only follow me personally, but as a group, as a, between the community and myself, school district and myself, I want to continue that strong relationship that we have together. Um, I don't want to go against, I don't want to go against you guys or anyone, I want to talk about it, let's, let's figure it out, that's what I want to do. It's not about me trying to, you know, get more out of the taxes. It is more about the partnership that we've had in the past and it's all, it's worked and we've done great things. Um, and I want to continue to do that, um, so, that's my, my, my goal.
Okay. How does that work, Aaron?
I don't know, I have a reservation.
Yeah, so you vote to table it, okay. Do you have, do you have anything else?
Okay, I don't, okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to table discussion?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Next, I'm going to move to new business, eleven point oh-one, I have a motion to approve the update to the transportation pay structure.
So moved.
Second.
New discussion. Roll call please.
Yes, yes.
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 Thank you, Jason.
Yes, yes.
Okay, next, eleven point oh-two, I have a motion to consider and approve the use of K-12 Ohio State Safety Grant. Security funding for district-wide safety and security enhancements equipment as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I just want to keep, you know, for our time, but effort taken to, to figuring out, reaching out to all the directors and contractors and sort of all this, it's a lot to get done.
First, first, well, it took a team, all the director at her part, or her process, kind of, just, or the little person, so, you know, we just. It's the kids first, and say, say, you know, all the, so.
Yeah, for, for, from the beginning, from curating the funds, figuring out how to spend the funds and then getting our contracts in place, so, thanks to everybody who's involved in the district.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, just, just a few little things. The cameras that we're replacing, we're fixing, that, that was, that's, we talked about before, I think. It, it, it's stuff that we've seen, that there's like issues with some, and, and this is just, the contractor that we're going, going to check those issues in place with the cameras.
It's a veteran gone, uh, through with before, and it is improving the cameras for maybe if you found some blind spots on past six months, but if that, that be corrected. Or if there's a camera, they're going to get on it and see, there might be a question where the lens, you know, high school administration might, might have seen that and had a, had a, we go look, look for it. And, and, um, through the work, with the grant, you know, direct, direct, and look at all the cameras, make sure they are, are working.
I was wondering too about the radios for the buses. There was some estimates for antennas and power cables. And it says if we need to replace those, but what determines that, or?
What we have on the buses, if they're good and they're affecting me, is they're new system.
Okay, so we just don't know whether they'll be compatible or, or if they're still working or not.
And so it's a, it's a range, I predict the range is like about a six thousand dollar range, five, six thousand.
Yeah.
For low end is we don't need, we can use the current transmitters and stuff and antennas and that's good. They don't work with this system, we have to replace them.
Okay, okay, gotcha, I just didn't know what determines whether we do or don't have to replace that. And then I also was a little bit curious about the transfinder package, I know we're using it, and I know there's a lot more you can do with it. Is, are there options with that as far as like, well, we're just, I don't know, I, I, I guess I don't really understand all of the bells and whistles and what, is it all necessary? Is this all stuff that we can or will, will use, or is it kind of thing we have to like, kind of learn and grow into it, or I just.
Let me, let me start to share, Mr. Fennec, you, you jump in, because really, this started with me, I have the first version of school learning, I think I can do a better job without having to district communicating with our families. Regarding bus stops, time and bus services, um, you know, just that, just communication issues. Uh, so I, so I talk to Mr. Fennec and Mr. Fennec about this. And we do have transfinder, but if you look at it as a basic pack package. We definitely aren't using it for all the, we want to get better at that. But this person will take transfinder to the next level where we want to communicate with our families. So, you know, my communication with Mr. Fennec and the transportation department is, we want to be able to tell our parents, you know, two weeks before the start of school. Exactly who's picking up their student, what bus number is going to be and what stop, they need to be at, at what time. So there's lots of like front loading that the department are going to have to do, but really to answer your question, we want to have that proactive communication instead of, um, after the first day of school, trying to figure out. You know, where, where we may have not communicated, maybe a bus driver can get a hold of family, we want all the information to be there. Then you have a family who's in the district as well, too, we want to be able to provide access on the website, go to the transportation issues. And just plug in their address, and without talking to some of the districts, or have all the, right there. So there's lots of capabilities, but that's a communication issues that we can do better as a district, communicate to that to help our family and our students.
So the transfinder itself, so does that kind of integrate with other, um, like communications that we're adding in the, um?
So the radios are really separate, that's just a safe start if you have, um, a, a bus down or there's a mission issue, but any time they communicate with buses, the transportation department and administrators. The transfinder is really, really different tool, equipment to track our buses, make sure that, you know, something else, when the kids get on, it's tracking who's on the bus. So it's safe to be in a stop, that there's an accident where they get held up or a train. The transportation department can determine right, right in there, which students are still on the bus, who got off the bus already. And we can monitor drivers, if some, if someone's a little bit, bit, uh, jumping on our bus, just go to the stop sign. We're going to be able to monitor their stop signs, and build monitors, and those types of things, for us to watch that.
Basically, we're buying hardware for the buses, this is almost all hardware. We're getting GPS, will be on all our buses. And we're getting tablets, so that now we can use the tools that we already have purchased on the buses. And it'll integrate what we have to give us more information.
And yearly, I think I did break it down right, for year year, okay, so most of it's official or something like that.
And most of it's just hardware.
Yep, yep. Well, this takes some of all the after, after drivers, like, like, decorate how your schedule and when they're going to be each minute, because I've said.
Where it would be easier is for substitute drivers, because it'll be, I don't know, pop up and it'll tell them where to go, where to stop. Also, it'll keep track of who's on and off the bus the whole time, so that if we do have an accident, we know exactly who's on the bus. And we can know that from our office as well as, so say the driver's incapacitated or something, we say, hey, we have these students here. We can call emergency services right now and then we can notify the parents also.
Great, great, thank you.
Awesome. Roll call please. Yes, yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Next, eleven point oh-three, consider, I get a motion to consider a medical contract, schedule one, and schedule two services as presented. So moved.
Second, second.
Roll call please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, everyone, thank you for attending, our next regular meeting will be Monday, April tenth at the Hice.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Remember five P M, you're all here, so I assume, but, uh, you remember. But, um, next, can I get a motion to break the executive session for the following, if one of our compensation, our lawyer official, the purchase of or sale of property, a bidding, bidding, specialized details. Roll call.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And there will be no action taken following the executive session.